Did you see that? I just know I had to know.
What's up? So I'd like to call to order the October 22nd meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. In front of you, you have the minutes from our October 8th meeting and when you've had a chance to take a look at those, if I could get a motion to approve. Katrina, second. Tom, all in favor? It's for all those that were there, okay? And then any abstentions? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the review and approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Sherri, second. Penny, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone wishing to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to reports and recognition. And the first item on our agenda is the K through eight assessment report with Dr. Corenti.
Good evening. Thank you. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to go through the K through eight assessment report for the Board of Ed this evening. Two weeks ago, you had the opportunity to listen to the department chairs as they went through the nine through 12th grade data. And tonight, we're fortunate to have our K through eight coordinators available to answer any questions that you might have about the data that I'll be presenting this evening. These people are certainly the content experts who stay current on all the best practices and design wonderful learning opportunities for our students. So this here, this evening with us, we have Melinda Meyer, our K through eight science coordinator, Mary Hannah, our K through eight social studies coordinator, Joanne Schulman, our K through fourth grade reading coordinator, Sarah Bros, our five through eight reading coordinator, Zoe Robinson, our K through eight math coordinator, and Karen Rob-- Karen Robinson, no, Karen Scalzo, our K through five writing coordinator. And then we also have Dave Gusich, the principal from Saks, and Christine Wallach, the principal from East, and Bill, who's here as a support to me. So thank you, Bill. So certainly, the ultimate purpose of assessment is to support and enhance student learning. Assessments come in many forms, both formal and informal. And tonight, we will be specifically reviewing summative data that is related to the Smarter Balanced Assessment. So the annual state testing, we are required by law to administer annual state testing in English Language Arts and Mathematics in grades three through eight and once in high school. And then we must also assess our students in science in grades five, eight, and once again in high school. And we are responsible for administering these assessments to our students. The annual state testing is designed to describe student achievement and growth over time. It gives us a snapshot of how our student achievement and how our students are achieving and how they're performing. But ultimately, it's really to be used with district assessments when we're making educational decisions for our students. So this annual state testing is not useful when you're really trying to look at a sole measurement of student achievement. Once again, it needs to be combined with other student assessment. It's also not really a guidance for our curriculum or instruction. We know that the state testing is aligned to the Common Core standards. We know that our curriculum is aligned to the Common Core standards. But you cannot prepare and teach to the test. And I think you've heard me say that before as I go through all of the information in regards to the Smarter Balanced Assessment. So the Smarter Balanced Assessment, there's an English Language Arts portion, and there's a Mathematics portion. And it's administered to all students in grades three through eight. And then there's the Next Generation Science Assessment. Last year, the Next Generation Science Assessment was a pilot. And this year, it will be administered and we will receive results of the Next Generation Science Assessment. And it's given to students in grades five, eight, and 11. And then the other tests that the state uses for English Language Arts and Mathematics is the SAT, which is given in grades 11. And Mr. Egan went through all of those results two weeks ago. We also have two alternative assessments that we administer to students who have cognitive disabilities. And so we have a Connecticut Alternative Assessment that we can utilize for English Language Arts and Mathematics. And then we also have the Connecticut Alternate Science Assessment that we can administer to students as well. And we certainly follow IEPs when looking at administering those assessments. And we have certain protocols in place that determine whether they will take the Connecticut Alternative Assessment or whether they would take the Smarter Balanced Assessment. So this is our assessment calendar for 2019. We have a testing window to deliver the Smarter Balanced Assessment. It begins at the end of March and it ends at the beginning of June. Normally, our students are assessed during April and May. So usually, they begin their assessment right after that April break, sometimes right before the April break, and then they'll go right through the month of May. And we do try to set up a testing schedule, and we send that out to the parents so that they're aware of that schedule as well. The Connecticut SAT Day, I think Mr. Sullivan shared that with you two weeks ago, that that's scheduled for March 27th, and then they have two makeup days in April. And then the Next Generation Science Assessment can also be given in a window. The high school students will have the opportunity to take it between February 4th and June 7th. And then grades five through eight will follow the same pattern with the Smarter Balanced Window between March 25th and June 7th. And then those alternate assessments are also given within that same window. So I thought I would just talk a little bit about the Next Generation Science Assessment. So as you know, our students in grades five, eight, and 11 will be taking this assessment this year. They did have an opportunity to participate in field test or pilot assessment last year. It is an online testing administration. It is using the same exact system that they use for the Smarter Balanced Assessment. So our students are very comfortable with the technology. They do have a variety of item types, such as simulations of science investigations and selected responses and table matches. Once again, similar to what they might be posed with in the Smarter Balanced Assessment. In a moment, I'm going to show you what those simulations look like. There's about six simulations that they could come across. And they also call those simulations clusters. And they really kind of look towards some of the performance tasks that we do in math, somewhat similar, but I think they're doing a little bit more manipulation with the computer. These are the areas that they'll assess in the Next Generation Science Assessment. So you have your disciplinary core concepts, and that's in that pink column. And those are the areas that could be assessed on the Next Generation Science Assessment. And then they will integrate in those scientific engineering practices and those cross-cutting concepts. What we don't know right now is how they're going to report out those results. In a minute, I'll share about how we normally report out the ELA results, and we talk about claims. We're just not quite sure how the science results will be reported out to us. So here's an example, and it breaks all PowerPoint rules. There is just way too much information on this screen. But I do want you to just kind of imagine that it's a split screen. And so you'll see on one side of the screen is the scenario that the students will need to read and look at. And then over on the other side of the screen are the questions that they're going to need to answer. So the students will, and this is an example of a simulation, so the students will read through the scenario, and then they'll move over to parts A, B, and C, and they'll have to answer the questions. What's most fascinating is that how they answer question A, which is really the question that they decide that they want to investigate in their science experiment, then moves into part B where they have to decide how they're going to move the science, the magnets in this case, and what are going to be things that are going to be changed, and what are things that are going to be constant. And then they actually have to manipulate the computer screen and conduct the science experiment. And what we don't see under part C is that there's a table that they're going to actually put all of their data in. The students will get the correct answer if they actually answer the question that they've selected. So it's really going to make them think through their problem and how they're going to go about picking and manipulating the objects in their science experiment and collect their data because it's important that it goes back to the question that they've designed and the question that they need to answer. The Smarter Balanced Assessment is also a computer-based assessment. It is computer adaptive, and the students are given questions. And based on the answers to the questions, the test will adjust slightly for them. Once again, it is just assessed with that grade level. So they will go to the high ends of fourth grade and the very low ends of fourth grade, but they don't reach out of that grade level. They stay within that grade level based on the requirements from the federal government that we need to test students within that grade level. And also, these two contain a variety of items, such as multiple choice, written-in responses, and click and drag, all sorts of items that they'll be doing. And then in Mathematics, they have a performance task. They no longer have the performance task in ELA. That was removed about two years ago, and that was really where they were looking at answering a research question and had to read several articles and then writing a response to the research that they were investigating. And they decided to remove that for the state of Connecticut. It was just requiring a little bit too long of testing for the students. But they do still have the performance task in math. And it's really designed to provide students with that opportunity to demonstrate their ability to apply their knowledge and higher-order thinking skills and to explore and analyze really complex real-world scenarios. So similar to what you were looking at for that science simulation, you might see something very similar in that performance task that students are asked to do in math. So in English Language Arts, we have four claims that the students are assessed in: reading, writing, listening, and research. But when the scores are reported out to parents and to the district, there are three claims because the writing and the research are combined together in one claim. And that was collapsed when they went, moved forward with removing that performance task in ELA. So they still are asked to look at research, they're still asked to do lots of writing, but it's just collapsed into those four claims when they reported out. And here's just an example of a fifth grade English Language Arts. They're asked to read a passage on Norman Rockwell. And then they're posed with a variety of questions. And so in this case, it's a working through the vocabulary, and they have to look at the word "moved," and they have to read it through the passage, and then they have to determine what the word "moved" in that sentence suggests. And then they use that evidence from the text to support their answer. So it's an open-ended response that the students are required to do. And then in Mathematics, they too have four claims. You have Concepts and Procedures, Problem Solving, Modeling and Data Analysis, and Communicating Reasoning. And then there's also three claims reported in Mathematics because they combine the Problem Solving and the Modeling and Data Analysis into one claim. So when people receive their reports and when the schools receive their reports, it's broken down into those three claims. And here's just an example of a fraction problem that the students would be posed with. Unlike in the past where it might be a multiple-choice question, they might be posed with it and they have to figure out what the answer is. In this case, they have to actually put, click and drag all the numbers into the boxes so that all of the sentences make sense. So, you know, four times what is going to be less than four? And they have to make that fraction. So they have to have a deep understanding of the fractions and what those mean. So when we get the results for the Smarter Balanced, they come in four different levels. The first level means that they're not meeting the achievement standard. The second level is they're approaching that achievement standard. The third is that they've met the achievement standard. And then the fourth is that they've exceeded that achievement standard. And then they will also receive performance indicators on each of those claims. So here's an example of the three claims in reading. And the way that it's reported out for parents to see is they'll let them know, are they above that standard? Are they approaching that standard? Are they below that standard? And here's just an example of the report. All the reports have been mailed to parents. The only grade level that is still on hold is the eighth grade. So I was, I think I shared with all of you in one of the Friday updates that there was one item in Mathematics that was put into the eighth grade assessment that shouldn't have been put in. And so they had to remove that item and rescore those and redo those reports. I am giving you the scores of the eighth grade today. We have reason to believe that they're not going to change dramatically because it's only about 40% of the students that were given this one problem. And if they do change, then obviously, I'll give you an update in the Friday folder. So let's take a look at how New Canaan did. So when we're taking a look at our results, we always start with the big picture. We look at those overall results. So 88.3% of our students in grades three through eight either met or exceeded that achievement level. And you can see the comparison of how we did in 2016 to 17 to 18. So it looks like we've made some nice growth between that year, 2016 and 17, and now it looks like we're just kind of staying at that steady, you know, steady place where we want to be. So once we take a look at the overall level, we start to dive into the grade levels. And so we start to take a look at how did our third graders perform? How did our fourth graders, fifth graders, sixth graders, seventh and eighth graders? And the reason that I have that three-year comparison is because you really can't look at how the third graders in 2017 did and then how the third graders did in 2018 because it's a different group of students. It's not a matched cohort. So you have to kind of shift and look diagonally. So you might want to take a look at how the third graders did in 2017, at 87.3% of them meeting or exceeding the achievement level. And then as fourth graders, 91.3% of them met or exceeded the achievement level. And there's even some variation there because you'll have new students that have moved into the district and other students that have left. So that's not a matched cohort, but it just kind of gives you a little bit of perspective. So that's one way that we look at the data. So we start with the big picture, we look at the overall results, then we begin to dive into each of the grade levels and start to look at how the students performed in each of the grade levels. And then we begin to take it one step further. And this slide's a little out of order, so I apologize if you're looking at your screen. But we do take a look at our results by level. So how many, what was the percentage of students that was at level one, level two, level three, level four? And we really dive into that. And when I say the word "we," it really means myself, the administrators, the coordinators, and the specialists or those coaches at each of those buildings. And it's amazing. I am just in awe when I sit down at those meetings with those people because they really know each of the students. They can tell you who is at that 2.8% at that level one, and who's at that level two, and who's at that level three and level four. And if there's any surprises, that's when they start to dive more deeply into the data. And they'll take a look at it, and they'll say, okay, so this was the Smarter Balanced, but what do we know about this student? And how did this student perform when we were giving our benchmark assessments? How did this student perform when we were giving the NWEA? What other information do we have about this student? But I am just so impressed with how they know these individual students so incredibly well. And they'll take it down into the class that they were in, and then certainly just what they may have been doing to help that student to grow throughout the course of the year. Certainly, if there are surprises, what do they do? They might take a look at it. They might look at the first benchmark assessment that they give, the first unit assessment. They might dive more deeply into some diagnostic assessments. So they're always looking at it from that student perspective. So we start at the big picture, and then we really move it into that student level. And then it's always nice to compare ourselves out to the DIRG. So here's our results in comparison to the rest of the DIRG. And certainly, we have a lot to celebrate. We're number one in the DIRG, and in ELA, we're number one in the state. So 88.3% of our students either met or exceeded the standard. I also think this is very impressive as well because it's always nice to see who has exceeded that standard. So more than half of our students are exceeding that standard, with 59.6% of our students at a level four or higher. So not only when we're looking at that data of the students who are at that level one and level two, we are diving into those level fours. We look at vertical scaled scores. Those are what come in on a student's report. And we look to make sure that that vertical scaled score is growing as well. So it should be growing whether they're at a level one, or a level three, or a level four. And we're constantly looking at that and the types of assessments that we're utilizing to help measure that. And then this is just a comparison by grade level. So it's always nice to take a look and see how we did across the DIRG by grade level. And you'll have one district where the data was suppressed. That could just be because they have a small percentage of students that may have performed in one category. So when you start to break it apart and they need to report out that grade level, they may have had a certain percentage of their students performing in level four, and another percentage of their students performing in level two. And then the percentage of students that might be at that level three is so small that they worry about the confidentiality, so it just gets suppressed. And you saw that even when we were giving your data on the different levels. Sometimes it's such a small number of students that they can't put that number there because it would reveal too much information. And this is a comparison by gender. So if you look at the gender comparison, it's about the same for each of the districts. It's about a five-point percentage difference where the females are performing a little bit higher than the males. And you'll see that throughout the DIRG, and then you'll also see that at the state level. So it is something that we do break apart. We look at it by class, we look at it by grade level, we ask ourselves different questions. We try to do match cohorts to make sure that kids are growing. So there's lots of different things that we'll do to address that, but it's not something that's really glaring to us right now. And it seems to be pretty consistent for the past few years. So let's take a look at the math. Here's our results in math. So you'll see in 2018, 87.8% of our students have met or exceeded that achievement level. And we've made huge growth since 2016. We took a big jump in 2017, and then we just continue to grow as we have moved forward. Once again, we take a look at the math data, we look at, start at the big overall picture, and then we move into the grade levels. And once again, you want to take a look at that from a diagonal to get your perspective. You could take a look at the fifth grade, and you could say 84.3% of them met or exceeded that standard in fifth grade, and then 87.4% of them met or exceeded the standard as sixth graders. So it's, once again, you've got to look at that from a diagonal perspective. And then this is how our data is by level. So you'll see some of the grade levels have been suppressed just because we need to ensure that confidentiality. But you can see where our students are performing. Once again, I'm so in awe when you go to those data meetings and you sit and you really have those conversations about the individual students and how they're performing. The administrators, the coordinators, and those reading, writing, and math specialists at the building levels have such a good handle on the students. And in many cases, already have action plans for the students that might be performing in that level one or level two. So here's a nice comparison of how we do in the DIRG. We performed quite well. We were number one in the DIRG. And we were number two- We were number one in the DIRG and we were number two in the state. So there was a small charter school. It's called the Stanford Charter School for Excellence. And they only tested one grade level and that was grade three. So I'm not really sure if that was a fair comparison. No, but there was, so our grade levels were three through eight, but they only had one grade level that was tested. So it's a new school that's growing in size. And they did outperform us with a 93.9% of their third graders meeting or exceeding the standard. But we're very proud of our results in mathematics as well. And we're also really proud of how we perform at that level four, how we're reaching those students. 64.3% of our students are meeting or exceeding that achievement level. And there's our comparison. And then we also like to look at it across the grade level and do a comparison out across the DIRG as well. And then we'll end with the gender. So once again, the females outperformed the males. Not a real statistical significant difference there. And you can see that's probably consistent across the state, I mean, in the DIRG and then at the state level. The state is actually a little bit closer than we are with just .2% difference. And some of the other DIRGs, schools in the DIRG are a little bit closer, but we're not concerned. Once again, it seems to be the pattern that we've been following for the last few years, but we'll continue to watch. So in summary, you know, I've talked a lot about how the analysis of the data's been completed, how the parent reports have been sent out, and how that triangulation of data is ongoing. And I really have to say that I think that the reason our students are performing so well is really the system that's been developed. So it really starts with the curriculum and how we teach our students and what we decide to teach our students at each of those levels. And then it's the assessments that go along with that curriculum. So you're designing our unit assessments. We're designing our benchmark assessments. We're making sure that students are able to do what we want them to do and know what we want them to know. And if they're not sure and they're not performing well in our assessments, then that's what moves us into our RTI process. And it allows us to really look closely at students and how we're differentiating the instruction within that classroom for the students, which also brings in all of the training that we do for our reading, writing, and math specialists who really spend a lot of time with the general education teachers and really work hard with them on how to differentiate that instruction within the classroom and what will they do to help meet the needs of all those students in their classroom. And then from there, when they're not meeting those needs through our tier-one instruction, which is our general education, then they'll move over into that tier-two or tier-three level. And that goes right into our response to intervention. And then they might be working with them in a small group or they might be working with them one-on-one depending on what that plan is for that student. And then from there, it really ties into our administrators that are in and out of classrooms, that are observing teachers and giving them feedback on their instruction, that are sitting with the teachers at those data team meetings. And that goes hand-in-hand with our coordinators. Our coordinators are in and out of classrooms, constantly giving feedback to teachers, leading those data team meetings, leading those data team discussions. And then it all circles back to that ongoing professional learning that we have to provide to all of our, not only teachers, but to our coordinators and to our administrators. So we have a lot to be proud of, but I think it's all that's been developed here in New Canaan that helps to make it all come together and allow our students to achieve. So we do have our coordinators here who I'm happy to turn over to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Karanti. These are really impressive results. And thank you to everyone for your, you know, work every day with our kids to ensure that these results continue to move forward. And so I'm sure we have a few questions, but let me open it up to the board and see who's got questions. Does anyone have questions? Maria?
I was just noticing that you said the girls tend to score better on the S-Back, but we heard last week that the boys actually score higher on the SAT. Is there a connection or is the S-Back not testing, you know, what the SAT's testing? Why would that disparity be? Why would the girls do better on the S-Back but not on the SAT?
I guess you're the girls that did better actually on the SAT.
But we said that's not a trend, so I'm just thinking. I'm just curious if we're measuring one thing and then when they get to high school, the test, the SAT's showing something else.
That's not an every-year pattern at the high school. I mean, if you go back, it was, I think, the previous three years before that, the boys did better than, this year, when the girls did better. That year before that, the girls, I think, did better as well over that trend. I don't necessarily have an answer for that. I mean, if you look at the data nationally, I think the boys did better for a long time on the SAT. However, this year, our girls outpaced our boys.
So then is, you know, is that a trend with the S-Back scores? Just a point.
I do think that the S-Back is very language-rich. And so starting in third grade, regardless of whether it's math or whether it's ELA, it's very language-rich. And so it is really taking your time to read through all of those passages carefully and put those answers into writing. I do think that sometimes the girls might move a little bit more methodical when they're taking the assessment and they might actually type a little bit more than the boys. But I think when we do our district assessments, we don't see a big difference between how our girls and our boys perform. They're usually about equal. So I can't answer why the females are outperforming them by five percentage points. I do know, though, that anybody who didn't meet those benchmarks, whether they were a girl or a boy, we do have some type of action plan in place for them and we continue to support them. I don't know if the coordinators have anything else that would make sense to them. You'd have to come to them.
This is one of my biggest fears.
I was just going to say that the scores that Jill presented were grades three through eight, correct? And when we break it down, we break it down by school and grade level. And there are certain instances in certain grade levels at certain schools where the males are outperforming the females in language arts. And I've just noticed a huge trend with boys that are just loving reading. And part of my job, the best part of my job, is I get to order a lot of books that get in the hands of children. So I think you'd have to look at it broken down a little bit more.
Any other questions?
Jill, I have a question. So you talked about matched cohorts and growth among the matched cohorts. Do you have a sense, or is it too early to have looked at all the data like that, as to what percentage of our matched cohorts achieved growth year-over-year?
I don't have the answer for that right now, but I could dive more deeply into it. I think right now, what we tend to look at is more the individuals. So we tend to run a report and we tend to look to see who has met that growth. So it's more, instead of taking it at that matched cohort level, we bring it more to the individual level. And then we really sort it out by saying, okay, so who didn't meet that growth and where are they? Are they at a level four? And if they're at that level four, why are they not making growth? You know, is it something that we need to be doing for that group of students who are at that level four in how we're challenging them or designing something differently for them? Or are they at a place where it's harder to make that growth at that level four? And then the same holds true when we're looking at the vertical scaled scores at a level two. So we tend to not just go the matched cohort and say, oh, look at that, the matched cohort made growth, because that doesn't really dive more deeply into, is that, why did they make that growth and who's making that growth? It's more interesting for us to kind of look at the individuals and then break it down by level to say, are our level-four students making the growth that we want them to make? Are the level-three students making the growth that we want them to do? Are the level-one students making the growth? So the state has identified target growth scores for each of the grade levels so that they will identify who's made that growth based on how much growth they think they need to make on their vertical scaled scores.
Okay.
Does that help to make sense?
Yeah. So do you look at then, overall, since you're looking at individuals instead of cohorts, what percentage of the individuals in the district made growth, the growth goals? I mean, am I asking that, does that make sense or did I not ask that correctly?
Yeah, I mean, we do. It's a lot to look at and it's very complicated to look at. And so we try to tend to look more at the individuals and try to hone in on that. I mean, could we run percentages? We could. I just don't know how important they would be when we're trying to analyze the data for us. Does the state run those percentages? They do. When they start to do out their accountability system, they'll take a look at that growth over time and they'll have the targets that they want the districts to achieve. So that's part of that accountability system.
Okay. And then, totally different question, and Darlene may have to help with this a little bit. So in the achievement by grade, the one, you know, when, I've got to get back to the actual page, sorry. I was, I had the page set and then I switched. Okay, so the results by level. And we have, you know, the percentages at level one and two and then the three, four, and five for each grade three through eight. If I were to compare the percentage, the overall percentage at level one and two to the percentage of children in special ed in those grades, how close would we get? And, you know, I know we have interventions for kids that don't achieve, but I would just, I was trying to get a sense for, you know, are most of these kids already identified or are they needing to be identified for interventions based on these tests? Does that make sense or is it?
So most of those students would be identified.
Okay.
You know, for special education services and receiving support through special education services. And I'm actually really hesitant in even, like, breaking those percentages down because I can give you numbers, but once again, that's why they suppress data.
That's fine. As long as, you know, I would be, I guess, as a board member, I would be concerned if there were, if there was a big disconnect between the special ed identification rate and these rates. So I guess if you could just say that it's close, I would feel better.
And I do have to say that that also includes EL students. So you also need to remember that we have students. And the only time that they are ever exempt from the assessment is if it's first year in the country and then they're tested thereafter. So it also includes EL students. So you might have somebody that's fairly new with the language that's also being assessed.
That's good. That's good feedback. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could just share briefly, I think that part of what you're driving towards is there are different uses of these data, right? And so for our purposes here tonight and for our discussions, we're looking at averages and the aggregate. But what Jill mentioned before was about the data team meetings that the coordinators have, that Jill's running and a part of, and our teachers are there. And that's really where they're drilling down, student by student, looking at performance, looking at these data along with other information that the teachers know, what they're seeing in the classroom, other assessments that students have taken. And then they really are developing the programming for students that, you know, maybe didn't perform to the level or degree that we were hoping and thinking that they would. So that's a whole different process that occurs really very granularly for each of our students. And I can assure you, you know, as they're sitting doing it, there's nobody better at the table, you know, than our coordinators, than our teachers, and certainly Jill, running those meetings. So that work is student by student, very granular, and we make sure that everyone is programmed for appropriately through interventions, RTI, and everything else.
And I don't want to fail to mention that that doesn't talk about the growth. So you might have a student who's at a level one but makes 110% of their target growth, but they're still performing at a level one. So I just, so that's where that, looking at the growth for that student, with that vertical scale score becomes so important for us at that individual level. So the direct instruction that we're doing for that student is helping them. It's just challenging for them to possibly answer those questions that might be on grade level for them at this time.
You know, I think it'd be helpful, not for this year, just as something to look at for the future as we analyze this data, is to figure out a way to look at how we're performing on growth as a district because I think that's important. I mean, you know, numbers in isolation don't necessarily always tell you something. So I don't, I don't know what the best way to do that, but I think it might be a good thing to start to look at, you know, because when you're starting to achieve at such a high level, it's hard to, you know, to...
Did you speak with a G at the state? I'm thinking that you may have spoken with a G at the State Department of Ed. But no, he does talk a little bit about how at some point you are going to have to start shifting over to that growth and really looking at the growth model. And so we're all still wrapping our heads around it and how to report it out and how to make most sense of it so that everybody understands it. So, but I do agree that that's probably the next step that we have to go to.
And this is only because you're doing so well. And I want to, I was looking at the seventh grade math performance and it's still, you know, third highest in the DRG. So, you know, I mean, we're doing very well, but it stands out as, you know, compared to the other grades, how well we did. Do we have any sense for what's going on in seventh grade or?
So that's the first thing that popped out. We did number one in every other grade level, so the question was why. So we did shift two units. So there were newer units that we put some performance tasks in, so that could have played a part. But we just, you know, when you look at their performance from last year, I think they held steady when you look diagonally as a cohort, so they didn't really drop. It was like a very small drop. They just didn't grow at the growth rate that the other grades grew. So this year, what we're doing is we're taking the units and we're actually doing mid-unit data teams. So in the middle of a unit, instead of waiting to the end, we gave a mini-assessment and we did an item analysis to see where some of the weaknesses were. We found at the end of the unit, we were being a little reactive to some of the struggles. So in our integer unit, we realized we needed to do a few more things to help get students across. And we were able to kind of hit that with the ground running this year and we're finding that we're putting some more things in place quicker. There's no real rhyme or reason as to why there was as much growth as we would like to see, but we're trying to be as proactive as possible this year with the teachers and trying to give them more professional learning around performance assessments. How do you sustain that perseverance with the students? When we looked at our performance assessment towards the end, we saw that the items weren't scoring as high in our district assessment. So we wanted to figure out why. We gave the kids a survey. They said fatigue. So we're trying to see what can we do to build their stamina up and trying to be proactive in everything that we're doing. Hopefully with the tweaks to the curriculum that we put in place, we'll be able to see them climb back up.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else?
Especially the analysis part is so interesting to see. It's detectives at work. And it sounds like you all are really trying to find out exactly what's happening. I was interested in the, in lots of things, but one thing sort of stopped me was the question set they had for the cluster for grade five, the magnet, magnet problem. And I wondered, was that, is that an example of something that's read to the students or do they have to decode it themselves?
The students, most of the students will be reading it for themselves, but one of the tools that they have embedded within the online platform is it for, is it to be able to be read for them? So they kind of have a voice that will read or highlight the words as they're reading through it. But most of our students will be reading it for themselves.
That would also be non-English speaking students also?
It would be.
So it's possible that it would be read to them and they couldn't understand a word of it after it was read to them?
I think what we're trying to do within the program, as we're seeing more and more examples coming out, is to embed those scientific reading skills within our course itself. So students will be able to take a passage and know how to decode the information out that they will need in order to do the experiment with magnets. So what material is, what words are there that should be familiar to them? What are some of the words that... words are there that should be familiar to them? What are some of the words that they might be able to kind of overlook that tells a story, but isn't giving them any additional information or evidence to support the scientific explanation that's being given, and then go on with the question? But they do have, there's so many wonderful tools that are embedded within the online platform for the students, including the ability for it to read, and for them to highlight. They can mark up the text. They actually have a notepad in there to take notes. So, one of the, one of the things that we're going to be working on this year with the students is to remind them about all these tools, and how do you use these tools on an online assessment to be an aid for you to be successful?
Sounds like it'd be good for homework also.
Yeah, well, and I think the more that they encounter them, we have different simulations that we have, such as, you might hear your students talking about FET, or Gizmos, and those are online simulations that parallel the simulations that they'll see on online assessments, like the NGSS. And so, they're interacting more in those online platforms to become familiar with them, but also because those are great places to do experiments that you might not be able to do in the classroom itself.
Is there feeling, is there a feeling of self-consciousness by, for a student who feels that they're below the other students, perhaps because of the reading skills, or non-English, or some other reason? Do you group the students in those cases with other people that are similar, have similar needs?
So, they, actually, all of the kids have headphones on when they're taking the assessments, regardless of whether they're using the headphones or not. So, you'll see the kids throughout the assessment, sometimes they're slipping it around their necks, sometimes they're putting it back up on their ears. So, all of the kids look, you know, regardless of whether they're having it read to them, or whether they just have the headphones on as noise buffers, they all have the headphones on, and, and nobody can really know what's going on, on their platform in front of them.
So, they don't feel discriminated upon. That's terrific.
No.
Thank you.
I mean, ultimately, if it says on a child's IEP that they should be taking it in a separate location, they can do so. All of the assessments are untimed. So, the Smarter Balance Assessment, the students have untimed, as well as the Next Generation Science Standards. So, years ago, that was something that someone might have wanted just on an IEP, but now all of the students are untimed when they take these assessments.
Thank you. Katrina?
I have another science question, sorry. Jill, you may be able to answer it. It's just on the NGSS test, that's rolling out statewide this year. The whole state will take it?
Yes.
And it's just Connecticut?
There are multiple states that will be taking the Next Generation Science Assessment. There are some states that have already begun with their Next Generation Science Assessment. The state of Connecticut always, you know, picks certain questions that they would want on their assessment, so they kind of make it their own, but it is still done through the air, which is the company that also does the Smarter Balance Assessment.
So, I'm assuming that test is not used for any college admissions? They use the ACT and the AP classes for science?
Yes.
Scores?
Okay, thank you.
The ACT, the SAT, too.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay. Tom?
You may have already touched on this, but I, I had my head sort of buried in the data. Looking at the math year-to-year comparison by grade, I see the, a drop from fourth to, the fourth grade drops going to fifth grade consecutively, and that's the only trend that I really see over this three-year period. Have you, any explanation for why that might be, or is there a way we could possibly look at that?
So, that's a trend across the state as well. But, so the standards are, really go through K through five, and then they reset, new set of standards from six through eight. So, by the time they reach that fifth grade assessment, the level at DOK4, which is Depth of Knowledge, which is the higher performing standards, are really assessed in the fifth grade. So, when we look at the test blueprint, the students are really expected to apply a lot of the standards. So, in the fraction domain, they're expected to take everything they learned in third and fourth, and fifth and fractions, and apply it to simulation. So, the questions tend to be a little bit more comprehensive, so that could be one reason for the drop. So, we brought that question up when we, I've been to state meetings, and they say, you know, it's just that application of those question types. When we look across the DURG, you'll also see that drop. However, we are growing in that gap more than we, our DURG is. So, we've made significant growth in the grade five, and we've sustained that, first in the DURG and first in the state for the last two years. So, we're kind of looking at, what is the data telling us with our own district assessments, and how are they growing, and how are they showing growth across the domains? And that, an area that we're continuing to focus on is the modeling and problem solving, which seems to be the one area that we dip in a little bit. So, we're giving a harder push towards students being able to explain, not only through an answer, but through a model, model representation for their answers. But it really does come down to the, the test blueprint and the level threes and fours questions for depth of knowledge that seems to require them more rigorous explanations on the assessment.
It makes sense, because the next year, they all pop again.
Right.
Up to another level. So, it just, the trend changes immediately the following year.
And then the standards reset.
Right.
Okay.
Penny?
I was, was just wondering, when students succeed expectations, how high above expectations is it measured? Like, I know at one point when they were thinking with this test, that the kids took it, and you really had a really talented kid, they could, like, blow through fourth grade and fifth grade, and, you know, and test somewhere in the sixth grade on it. But I think they have narrowed that scope, was my understanding.
They have. So, originally, when they first put forth the idea for this computer adaptive test, they were going to allow students to go out of the grade level, similar to what happens when our students take NWEA. So, when they take NWEA, they truly can go out of the grade level, and that's another data point that we use. But when they're taking the state testing, they cannot go out of the grade level. So, they can take them to the extreme high of fourth grade, or the extreme high of fifth grade, but they won't take them out of that grade level. And then they'll take them to the extreme low of the grade level as well, for the, the students that might be at that level one. But they want them to be tested. That's part of the federal regulations with the state testing, that they're tested within that grade level. So, when they originally thought that they would be able to do a true computer adaptive assessment and take them as high as they can go, they had to pull back on that.
Okay.
And that's where that NWEA is nice for us to triangulate, because that is truly a computer adaptive test. So, you could have a sixth grader who jumps all the way up into eighth grade math, or eighth grade reading, because it will just allow the kid to continue to get test questions, and they'll get progressively harder. And then, they might mess up on one of the questions, and then it brings them back a little bit, and then pushes them forward until they find that just right spot for them.
So, I guess as a follow-up, in, on, on NWEA, when you get a student that jumps up like that, what, what do we do for the individual action plan for that student?
Anybody want to talk about NWEA? When we have a student that's performing extremely high, how do we challenge them within the classroom?
Yeah, that's the beauty of, that, that's differentiation. So, whenever we're looking, well, we look in the data teams, and we look to see where the children are. And then we use that information with our district assessments to say, does that match? So, each assessment is looking at different targets, different areas. So, some of our district assessments are looking at the written response to text, for example, whereas NWEA may be looking at the reading. So, we look between them in order to match, what is the depth of knowledge of each child. And then, we work with the teachers, and that's what Dr. Krancy was talking about with our specialists, and with us, to go into the classroom, and really help to, really ask the question of what do all students need, and then what do certain groups of children need within that classroom. So, it may be differentiating the reading level, it may be differentiating the activity, it may be differentiating, you know, the content that students are looking at specifically. But ultimately, it's looking within the curriculum to see, here's what we want all students to know and be able to do, and then, what does this particular group of children need, and this particular group of children. And then we work with the teachers to help figure out the routines and procedures that are available to help manage and navigate that kind of situation. The test, too, you know, both the NWEA and the SBAK, when you're talking about, like, the frustration level of a child, if they're measuring vocabulary, then there, there will be less context clues within the passage. But overall, there's a lot of, there are a lot of context clues that are built within the stories, and that are built within the passages in order to help guide the children toward the information. So, like, the example of magnet, because that's assessing a science concept, may be not so specific in the science test, but if they were assessing mag, magnets in an information piece in the reading, it would explain it, so that the child is being assessed on using the context clues, and using the depth of knowledge that they have toward the skill, in order to show mastery toward that target. So, the, the, the targets change depending on the passage, and the level of support that the children receive as a result is based on that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, that's good. Thank you very much, and congratulations on the great results.
Maria?
I'm just thinking about the student experience while they're taking the test, and at the lower, like, the grade five sample for the science test looks pretty packed. What type of devices are they using in the lower school versus the height? Like, how many different device, types of devices are used at the high school for the 11th grade test? And is any of that data tracked, to see if it impacts the performance?
So, we've been using laptops. So, we put the kids onto the laptops. We've noticed that they
In grade five, laptops or Chromebook?
Well, Chromebooks that they'll use in grade five. But actually, we haven't decided what we're going to test the students on in science yet, so if we need to use laptops, because actually, some of the science classrooms actually have laptops instead of Chromebooks, just based on some of the simulations that they do. So, they just run better on those laptops than they do on the Chromebooks. So, we'll always have to go back and look at what's the best platform for students to take. Last year, when we ran the pilot for our juniors at the high school, we actually brought carts over from the middle school. So, we brought over the carts that had the browser load it right into it, so that the kids could access it, and they were using the same devices that we probably used with our fifth and eighth graders as well. So, you know, we, we'll use the platform that makes most sense for our kids. I think last year, some of them did take it on the Chromebooks, and then we had some that took it on the laptops. I don't think we noticed a difference in, in either one. The screen size was the same for both of the kids. It's really teaching them how to, to manipulate the split screen. And they do that in math already, so they've had experiences with that split screen. They do that in reading as well, so they know how to scroll on one side, and, and keep the passage there, and, and go back and forth. But we'll also give them, you know, certain, there's little training things that they can take as well, so that they feel very comfortable walking in. We don't want the, the format of the test to throw them, so you want to make sure that they've had some exposure to what it's going to look like. And some of the simulations that we're currently using in science class, and have been using for years, kind of mirror what this assessment would look like for them.
So, for 11th grade, it's uniform, the same device?
Exactly. Yeah, so we just bring over the carts, so, because they all have, bring their own device. And so, we did try to run one year where we tried to load the browser into the devices, and then it just seemed to be, you know, the day of the test would come, and the kid had took that browser off, and then we were reloading it. So, we just realized it's so much easier for us to just work it through with the middle school, and bring over the devices from the middle school. So, they come in on the carts, they're already charged, they're rolled right out into the classrooms, the kids use them, they don't have to worry about anything else.
Sounds better.
Yeah, much better. And it was, it was a great trial, and it was, you know, a good initiative, but it just didn't make sense in the long run. And so, last year, we went right back to it.
Anyone else? Well, thank you all. It's a great, great, great year, and I look forward to hearing from you next year.
No pressure.
No pressure, right?
You don't get to relax, you don't get to relax.
Let's enjoy this for 24.
I know. Hence my question about changing the way we look at it.
Really amazing work. Yeah, as Jill was saying, it's, we have such a strong foundation in curriculum, our assessment, and really tepple with our instruction, you know, and those really are the, the three legs of the stool, right? Curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And I think truly, like Jill's work and the work of the coordinators, it's superb. Really yields these types of results. Good stuff.
Yeah, that's great. All right, moving on to statement of accounts with Dr. Keating.
Good evening. So, before you tonight, you have the statement of accounts through September 30. And while it is three months into the school year, 25% of the school year, fiscal year, I should say, behind us, we're only one month into the school year. And so, that would explain why 17% of the budget has been expended rather than 25. I also wanted to note for you that if you take a look at the far left-hand column, you're going to see that last year through September 30, we spent 13.4 million. This year, it's 15.2. And 1.6 million of that difference relates to the fact that we paid our DACO contract, which we pay in two installments each year in September this year. Last year, we, we paid it in October. So, that's the reason for the difference. It's a timing issue in that payment. I also wanted to point out that we spent, we are encumbered at 72% of our budget, which leaves 11% that's not encumbered. We continue to work through the draft, the staff utilization report that Gary's department's put out, comparing that to Munis, and we may have some changes in our encumbrances as a result of that. I also wanted to point out to you that in the budget, you're going to notice under non-certified salaries, that administrative support has $108,000 minus position right now. The reason for that is that we've insourced our print services into the district. We had outsourced them in the past at $400,000 a year. Insourcing those services is going to save us $200,000. We had $100,000 anticipated in the budget, and it's actually going to be $200,000. We will do a transfer at the reforecast at mid-year for that. And then finally, I did want to point out that tuition of district is currently running over budget as well. It's 174. Darlene and I monitor that frequently, and will continue to do that throughout the year. This is not unusual for us to have fluctuations in this account. They're actually under budget in terms of outsourced services, which will help cover a portion of that. But I did want to point that out, as that's an area that we have been taking, taking a close look at. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joanne. Does anyone have any questions? Just, Maria?
The, the transfer for reference software, is that like online, did, online subscriptions and?
It is. It came from the high school's account. They actually transferred between two of their accounts, so it was for reference material, online.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Keating. All right. And I don't see anyone from the public who would like to speak tonight, so I will move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Lutzey?
Sure. A couple of very brief announcements first. I just want to remind the board that on Wednesday, we'll be holding a focus group meeting here in the Wagner Room, for folks to talk about guiding principles related to student sleep and start times, and that ongoing conversation. But also to let the, the community know that on the board, board meeting on November 19, we're talking about that, scheduling that meeting to include the possum possible scenarios from our transportation consultant, who we've been working with. Would invite people who have been curious about the right opportunity, a good opportunity to share their feelings one way or another about changing school start times, student sleep, other things with the board. Invite them to participate in the public comment section, or part of the agenda on that 19th meeting. Again, the transportation consultant will be here with us, and be able to share some scenarios that he's continuing to draft on our behalf, after doing the, the research, and holding the interviews, and doing other work for us. Also, I want to let the board know that the, we're working on the final edits of the contract with the teachers, and once that, those final edits are completed and agreed upon with the association and with the administration, then that would be filed with the town, at which point, there's 30 days that the town has, in which to take action on the contract. The only action that the, that the town legislative body takes, which is, would be our town council, would be to reject the contract. If they agree with the contract, they would take no action, or do what our town council has done the last couple of years, which is to affirmatively vote not to reject the contract. But either way, once we have that completed and filed with the town, I'll be working with members of the town council to schedule a time to see them with Tom Mooney, to talk about the nuts and bolts of the contract, and answer any questions that they might have. And I'll certainly let you know about that. And as Joanne mentioned, we're a couple of months in- And as Joanne mentioned, we're a couple of months into the school year at this point, as we round the corner on October. So, believe it or not, the first quarter is ending soon here at the high school and across the districts. For many of us, me included, it feels in some ways the school year's still just getting underway, but we're crossing 25%. So, time flies. At our next Board of Education meeting here, as Joanne mentioned briefly, Gary will be sharing with us our staff utilization reports and our enrollment projections. We'll also have a presentation from our K-12 health curriculum coordinator, just giving an update on the work that he's been doing, the ongoing work. As you know, we began rolling out some of the program at the elementary levels. We'll get a brief update on how that's going and other work that's underway. And if all, if the stars align, we'll have Policy Series 2000 to take a look at for a first read.
All right. Thank you. And with that, if I could get a motion to adjourn? Hazel, second, Tom, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.